Buenas, San Hafa Daye, welcome. Welcome to this public hearing, which is now called to order. And today's date is October 17, 2025, and the time now is 8:31. Apologize for the short delay. This hearing is conducted by myself, Senator Teloty Taidegui, Chairwoman of the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement. To comply with the open government law, notices of this hearing was published in KUAM, and the Government of Guam Notice Portal on February 10, 2025, and the second notice on Wednesday, October 15, 2025. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all senators and media via email and is made available on the Guam Legislature website. I would like to recognize those who are here in person and those watching from home. Welcome to your legislature. I would also like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us today, Senator Shelley Cavill and Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you, ladies, for being here. We've got word that Senator Parkinson will be coming shortly. He's running a little bit late, but for the sake of time and those who took the time to be here on time, I'd like to start on time for you. So colleagues, a copy of the legislation and documents received ahead of this hearing is accessed through your Google Drive, which was published on the public hearing notices for this hearing and also emailed to you in advance. For the listening public, you can access the Google Drive link on the public hearing notices published on the government of Guam Public Notice Portal at notices.guam.gov or on the Guam Legislative Website at guamlegislature.gov. If you need assistance, please feel free to call the legislature at 671-472-3465. Before we begin, I would like to set some rules of engagement during this public hearing. When you speak, I ask that you please speak directly into the microphone. And for the record, please state your name, position, and who you represent. I ask that those who are testifying today to stay seated for any questions my colleagues may have, and then you may be excused. I respectfully ask that you conduct yourselves professionally and respectfully and respect others' opinions. Those individuals who do not comply to these rules will be removed from the room and prohibited from further participation. On the agenda this morning, we have Bill 102-38 introduced by Senator Will Parkinson. We have Bill 165-38 introduced by Shelley V. Cavill and Bill Number 178-38 introduced by Tina Rose Munya Barnes. So because of time and the first bill on the agenda, we're going to have it moved down the agenda and go last. So we're going to go ahead and start with Bill 165-38 COR. And this is introduced by Senator Shelley V. Cavill in Act to amend Section D of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending the period during which holders of valid U.S. driver's license may operate motor vehicles in Guam. Now, there was a physical note that was provided. And in this physical note, there has been a waiver for this physical note. Also, this bill received notice from our legal counsel that there is nothing to be amended at this time. So that being said, we also, just for the record as well, we have invited several people to attend. And 165... I'm looking for my listed attendees. I'll mention those list of attendees when I, after our good senator introduces with her introduction of opening remarks on her bill. So with this time, please, Senator Cavill, you are now recognized.
Seduzma si, Madam Chair. Hafa Daye, buenas, everyone. Buenas, colleagues, and to everyone joining us this morning. Thank you for being here. This measure was introduced to address a small but persistent issue that has impacted many people who arrive on our island, whether they are new residents, students, healthcare workers, teachers, federal employees, construction workers, or military dependents who have chosen to make Guam their home. Under current law, these individuals are only permitted to drive for 30 days with their valid driver's license from any other territory, Commonwealth or U.S. state, before being required to convert it to Guam-issued license. But as we know, DRT's Division of Motor Vehicles continues to face processing delays, long appointment backlogs, and limited testing availabilities, which often make the 30-day window difficult to meet. Bill Number 165-38 COR simply extends that timeframe to 90 days, giving new residents more flexibility to schedule their appointments and complete the process without unnecessary stress or penalties. It also maintains DRT's authority to grant an optional extension of up to one year, provided the individual registers their license and pays a small administrative fees. This is a practical measure reform, one that eases administrative strain, respects the realities of our agencies, and treats new residents fairly. It keeps all existing safety and verification requirements intact while giving DRT the discretion to verify and monitor compliance responsibly. Ultimately, this bill is about good governance, about making sure our laws work for the people they're meant to serve. It's about recognizing that efficiency and fairness can coexist and that small thoughtful improvements to our public systems can make a big difference in people's daily lives. I look forward to hearing from our stakeholders and the public on how this measure can best support both DRT's mission and the community it serves. Thank you very much. Seduzma si, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator. And I'd also like to recognize Senator Parkinson, who just joined us this morning. Thank you, Senator. At this time, I'd like to recognize those who we sent a testimony, and that is Department of Revenue and Taxation. We did get a message from the director. She was unable to attend. However, she did send testimony in, and I would like to read the testimony in for the record for her. I was hoping she'd have somebody come and read it for her, but we'll do that just for the listening audience so they understand what was said. So on Bill 165-38 COR, the Director of Rev. Tax, thanks for the opportunity to provide testimony. Apologize for not being able to be here today. But she states that this testimony for Bill 165-38, in Act to amend Section D of Article, she mentions it. And her response is, "DRT has no objections to the proposed extension of time from 30 to 90 days." And that's extent of her testimony. So there is no objection from that. And I just, if anybody on the panel here with Senator Barnes, if you have any questions or make comments or anything?
On the bill, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I support the efforts, this measure. I truly support the author's efforts in promoting this. And I don't have any questions at this time, but would like to see this measure move forward. Seduzma si.
You're very welcome. Any comments, Senator Parkinson? No comments. Senator Cavill, would you like to close?
Seduzma si, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues, Ranking Member Tina Munya Barnes, thank you for your comment. And Senator Parkinson, Bill 165-38 COR seeks to extend the grace period during which individuals with valid driver's license issued by other U.S. jurisdictions may legally operate motor vehicles in Guam from the current 30 days to 90 days after arrival. This measure recognizes that new residents arriving on the island often face administrative delays and limited testing availability at DMV. By extending this timeframe, the bill provides flexibility for transitioning residents while maintaining existing safety standards and credentialing requirements. So the measure emphasizes balancing road safety with administrative practicality and Guam's role as a welcoming jurisdiction for new arrivals. Thank you to all of you. What we heard affirms the purpose of this bill, that sometimes the simplest solutions can have the greatest impact. The extension proposed in Bill Number 165-38 COR may seem minor or minute, but for new residents trying to get settled, it represents peace of mind and a sense of fairness. It also helps our government meet people where they are, balancing efficiency with accountability and compassion with compliance. This measure also recognizes the hard work of our Department of Revenue and Taxation staff who continue to serve the public despite limited resources. By giving DRT the flexibility to manage licenses conversions with unextended timeframe, we are helping the agency succeed, reducing unnecessary pressure while maintaining all safety and verification standards. Guam's progress depends on the people who chooses to make this island their home. This bill is one small way of ensuring that their transition is a little smoother and their experience a little fairer and their welcome a little warmer. I want to thank the Chair and the members of this committee for their attention to this measure and for continuing to support legislation that makes our government more practical, efficient, and people-focused. Seduzma si, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. And just before I close, I just wanted to make a comment that the 30-day limit has been a long source of confusion and stress for individuals, you know, relocating especially to Guam. Those arriving for short-term assignments are waiting for permanent resident documentation. Many newcomers face a logistical hurdle, such as securing appointments, gathering required documents, and navigating unfamiliar systems. So by this extension, we have lifted that burden for the people. So I thank Senator Cavill for those considerations. And a lot of times, you know, just the frustration in our community. Sometimes if we can move some of those barriers out of the way, it goes a long way. So that being said, I duly have heard Bill 165-38 and then offer that anyone with any testimonies, please submit it to my office within five working days. And at the end of this hearing, I will give the address. But if you want to deliver it in person, feel free, or you can email it at senatorteloty@gmail.com. And this hearing has now been adjourned for Bill 165-38. The next bill that we'll be hearing is Bill 178-38 LS, introduced by Tina Rose Munya Barnes. It's an act to add a new Section 1115 to Chapter 1, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the requiring of the Department of Revenue and Taxation to issue a request for proposal, RFP, for a pilot robotic process automation program. A physical note was provided to the body. And this physical note was given to us on August 27, 2025. And the physical note states that the intent of this bill is to require DRT to issue an RFP for the Pilot Robotic Process Automation Program. As per the legislature, this program will enhance government efficiency, reduce human error in data transfer, and improve the overall experience of the public. Because the bill's mandate is limited in issuing an RFP with no fund source or government appropriation cited, based on comments received from DRT, the associated costs of putting up an RFP are generally covered under the department's operational budget. However, DRT, for the comments that the department is not able to provide a quotation for this program for a vendor without knowing the scope of work needed. Additionally, DRT does not expect to issue an RFP for such a program as it is near to being rendered obsolete and soon to be replaced by an AI artificial intelligence. As such, the Bureau is unable to assert in the fiscal impact of the proposed legislation. That is what we heard from, I mean, BBMR. And also, we have requested testimony from DRT as well as the Department, I mean, Rev. Tax. Sometimes I just use the acronym, it's easier, but Department of Revenue and Taxation. And we also requested testimony from Department of Administration. Again, Maria Lozama has sent her reguette that she's unable to attend. However, she did send in her testimony. And for the record, I'd like to read her testimony into the record before I begin turn it over to Senator Munya Barnes. Excuse me, sorry. And it reads, "The robotic process automation RP uses intelligent automation technology to perform repetitive office tasks of human workers, such as extracting data, filling in forms, moving files, etc. Initial discussion has revealed that our current system has the capacity of implementing RPA, but that a walkthrough and firsthand observation of various branch processes are needed in order to confirm the type to be used, one that runs automatically or one that is triggered by certain events, such as a transition item being added to the queue. The walkthrough/observation is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, October 21, 2025." We'll continue to ask for the testimony from Department of Administration as well to move this bill forward. And now I'd like to turn it over to the author of the legislation of Bill 178-38, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. You are now recognized, ma'am.
Seduzma si, Madam Chair. And then manana seduz to all those present here this morning. Buenas, San Hafa Daye. Thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing this Bill 178-38 COR. And simply put, this measure directs the Department of Revenue and Taxation to develop a robotic process automation or a RPA program. And this is technology that can perform repetitive digital tasks, automating data entry and other routine processes. It can further help reduce human errors and free up our employees to focus on higher-value work that requires human judgment and customer service with the people of Guam. Madam Chair, time and time again, we hear from our community that they want faster, more reliable service in public-facing agencies, especially where they interact with government the most like the Department of Revenue and Taxation. People are asking for shorter lines and quicker processing times. And this bill responds to that call by introducing tools that can help our employees work smarter, not harder, so the residents can get the quality service they deserve. This program isn't new, Madam Chair. Governments around the world have implemented RPAs to better service their communities. The Guam Power Authority is among those agencies, as an example here on Guam, that saw successful implementation of the program. RPA is definitely evolving today. The technology is rapidly changing to incorporate AI. But this program is a stepping stone toward integrating AI in our government. It is an opportunity to reassess the government, its IT infrastructure, and our workforce. As Madam Chair, as we face challenging fiscal times, it is important that we begin to find ways to automate and use technology available to us to make government work for the people. We can't push back technology, Madam Chair. We literally have to embrace it, but we have to start somewhere. And the offering of this Bill 178-38 pushes our government to start here and see where it works. And Madam Chair, just a little bit longer as we look to address the fiscal challenges and limited staffing capacity in the government of Guam, as noted in previous sessions in our August body, that there were short of staff. Department of Revenue and Taxation was short of staff and couldn't be able to hire enough staff fast enough. This measure was brought up previously in the previous legislature. But again, you know, one legislature doesn't bind the other. That's why this bill is being introduced. Again, literally, Madam Chair, to meet the public demand for faster and more reliable services in higher-demand agencies. And I quoted this Department of Revenue and Taxation, and then also to allow the government employees to focus on higher-value, judgment-based work by literally by automating repetitive digital tasks and then to align Guam's with international best practices as seen in other parts of this region. We can look at examples that are being done in Japan, South Korea, Singapore, Taiwan, where automation has literally improved the government performances and citizen satisfaction. And again, we look at what is happening at Rev. Tax, even just with the driver's license lines, renewing of licenses and business licenses and other licenses in that area. And again, not to take away from the hard work that the employees of Department of Revenue and Taxation do. This is just to augment and to add. So I'm hoping it can get further consideration, Madam Chair, with your committee. And more importantly, to embrace the IT component to that as I know that you are one who has complete interests and has been working on AI policy and moving through to that. So I hope this August body can look at positive consideration for this bill moving forward for Rev. Tax as a pilot project. So if this is successful, other agencies can tap into the same. So thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing this bill in a timely manner and giving it its fair consideration. And I hope you can add to that and even add a markup. So signa ma si. Thank you.
Seduzma si, Senator Barnes. Yes, you know, in a timely fashion, when anything comes here in technology, we've got to hear it right away. Because next thing you know, in a month, it's going to be obsolete. You know, in a year, it'll be obsolete. And that's the worrisome of this. And I'm really happy that DRT is jumping on this. But October 21, 2025 is when they're going to be doing, you know, a walkthrough observation to see about using this type of technology. You know, that AI has made great strides, you know, every day. It changes so quickly. And I wanted to bring, I was hoping that DOA would be here as well because I had some questions. And for the sake of markup, I'd like to bring this to the forefront, some of the questions that we have because we are going to reach out to these agencies, those who are impacted by this, which could be the entire government of Guam. And the question I have that will be forwarded to them where what type of RPA will be implemented? And how many government agencies would be mandated to use it? Now you're going to change your software technology. You know, what's going to happen there? And not just this type, but even in AI, it's going to change everything that you're used to, just like our phones. You know, next thing you know, you have a different phone because it has, it's become obsolete. You know, certain programs, we saw what happened with the word that became obsolete. Everybody had to change into a new program. Is there a possibility that this program will replace human workers? Is a big question. If so, how can we provide workers protection and compensation from being replaced by automation technology? If our RPAs are to be implemented across the government of Guam agencies, which of these RPAs will be used? And is there any adoption/implementation scheduled available for review? Also, though RPAs can automate certain simple-to-complex processes, we must also remember that these softwares cannot solve for complex variables that require more complex background, knowledgeable, and cultural and personal experiences. And how can we monitor these RPAs to ensure that each task is assigned? So those are some of the questions that I have that in the markup meeting, excuse me, in the markup meeting that we will be requesting. And hopefully, Senator Barnes, that we can get some of those questions. And any questions my colleagues have today, say it what you have now so that we can reach out to those stakeholders, bring it to the table, and try and move forward from there. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Cavill, if you have any questions or comments that you would like to make.
Seduzma si, Madam Chair. Thank you to the author of this bill. I think that this is, in a timely manner, very much needed. You know, Department of Rev. Tax, I would consider this agency as a steward of the taxpayers' money. So I think efficiency, streamlining it, introducing innovation, modernizing it, would be something that is important for us to look into during this time. And we have entered digital age already, not to mention that this process can actually help the employees that are there at DRT because, you know, they can probably, this system can probably solve those issues where there had been delay. So this can actually help the employees there expedite the processing. So on that note, thank you, author, Ranking Member Tina Munya Barnes, for this bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Cavill. Senator Parkinson? Okay, no comments. Okay, so at this time, to also ensure that in the markup meeting certain things are met and also to provide detailed and abstract plans of testing, monitoring for quality assurance and implementation is also important. We need to keep in mind as well that each agency and the prospective capabilities will require different RPAs. We cannot look at one type of RPA from one company to suit all the needs of the government of Guam. Madam, would you like to close? Okay, great. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Seduzma si, again, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to close. I just want to say at the end of the day, Madam Chair, this bill is about making government work better for our people. And every day, our residents ask for faster services and less red tape. And this measure will definitely help us. And this measure will definitely help us take a meaningful step in that direction by piloting the robotic process automation, which we would call it the RPA. We're not replacing our employees, and I want to get that clear. We're not replacing our employees. We're literally just strengthening our workforce and building more IT-focused jobs. We are empowering employees with tools to do their jobs more efficiently and more effectively. And this is about modernization and efficiency that the people have asked for, and you and I, Madam Chair, hear that all the time, especially with what's happening up at Rev and Tax. So I humbly ask for your support on this bill 178-38, so that we can continue building a smarter, stronger, and a more service-driven government for the people of Guam. So sidoos mase for hearing this bill, and I'm hoping that with the markups and anything else that you can to strengthen this bill, Madam Chair, I'm going to extend my true appreciation and dunklele na sidoos mase for at least giving this bill a fair shot in your committee. So sign a mase, and thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnes. And at this time, Bill 178-38 LS has been duly heard. Again, you can provide your written test moods within five working days to my office at senatorsalot@gmail.com. That's the email address, and you can feel free to hand deliver it here at the legislature or at the DNA building on the fourth floor. And this bill has been heard. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 102-38 COR, introduced by Senator Will Parkinson. It's-- and this bill is an act to establish the Guam Tariff Advantage Development Act, the GTADA, utilizing Guam's unique tariff-exempt status to incentivize economic diversification, enhance the manufacturing opportunities, attract foreign direct investment, and support job creation. To amend Title 11 and Title 12 of the Guam Code annotated to establish procedures, incentives, and administrative structures necessary heretofore, and to provide for effective implementation and oversight. The bill, we invited several people to attend the department for this public hearing on Bill 102-38. It's the Department of Administration, Department of Labor, Department of Revenue and Tax, the Guam Community College, Guam Economic Development Authority, Port Authority of Guam, the University of Guam. And the bill received a fiscal note. The bill received a fiscal note on May 22nd, 2025. And the fiscal note reads, "From BBMR, the proposed legislation intends to establish the Guam Tariff Advantage Development Act to utilize Guam's unique tariff exemption tax to spur business investment in manufacturing and assembling operations with a goal of creating jobs and fostering economic diversification. The bill authorizes tax incentive-- incentives with the Guam Economic Development Authority QC program for eligible enterprise that establishes manufacturing or assembles operations in Guam and exports to the United States mainland tariff-free. The eligible enterprise may qualify for a QC with-- that allows a corporate income tax rebate of up to 75% for a period not to exceed 20 years, rebate of up to 75% of dividend tax for a maximum period of five years. 100% abatement of real property taxes for 10 years, renewable subject to employment and investment benchmarks, and expedites permitting and regulatory approvals from relevant government of Guam entities. Per comments provided by AGIDA, the over-establishment of new businesses in Guam increases the tax base, which fosters additional tax collections from the workers they hire and the business itself. This could lead to a positive fiscal impact on the government of Guam's coffers, even if the business receive tax benefits through the QC program. Further, the bill seeks to require AGIDA to implement programs and develop industrial property to achieve its goal. However, it does not provide a funding source to AGIDA for these programs and initiatives. AGIDA will be unable to achieve the bill's goal and objectives without substantial investment, for which they currently-- currently does not exist any funding within AGIDA's budget. The unfunded mandate will have severe negative impact to AGIDA's budget if forced to implement its provisions." That is from BBMR. And we also heard from Legal. There is no amendment at this time or recommendations for Bill 102-38. I don't think I'm missing anything else further, so I will go ahead and turn over the microphone to the author of the legislation on Bill 102-38. Senator Parkinson, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Buones in Hafaday. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this bill during this public hearing. The Guam Tariff Advantage Development Act. Guam possesses a unique but underutilized economic advantage. As an unincorporated U.S. territory outside the U.S. Customs Territory, Guam is exempt from many federal import tariffs under General Headnote 3A4 of the U.S. harmonized tariff schedule. In practical terms, this special status means we can import raw materials into Guam duty-free, substantially transform or assemble them here with at least 30% local value-added, and then export the finished product into the U.S. mainland market duty-free. This is an extraordinary incentive, an incentive not found anywhere else in the country. Products made in Guam can be treated as made in the USA. For customs purposes, they will undergo local processing. This is the context and the genesis of Bill 102-38. We recognize that this tariff-exempt status, a relic of Guam's political status in history, is a powerful tool for economic development. There are not very many advantages to our territorial status, but this is one of the few. However, despite having this powerful tool, for decades, Guam has not fully capitalized on it, largely because we had little manufacturing base to exploit the advantage. Today, however, we face a changing global trade environment that makes this the right time to activate Guam's tariff advantage in a big way. Bill 102-38 is designed to do exactly that, to provide the legal framework, incentives, and policy guidance needed to turn an abstract trade advantage into real factories, real jobs, and real growth for Guam. Guam, to the international business world, offers political stability, U.S. intellectual property protection, and close proximity to Asian markets. And the aforementioned tariff-exempt status, a combination few locations can match, really leads us to this golden opportunity for Guam in this high-tariff era of America First. Bill 102-38 was crafted precisely in response to this moment, to signal that Guam is open for business as a tariff-advantage manufacturing and distribution base. So for the people who are unfamiliar with how this works, let me walk through the key provisions of Bill 102-38. First is the establishment of the tariff-advantage zones. The bill directs the Guam Economic Development Authority to designate tariff-advantage zones within Guam's industrially-zoned lands. These TAZs will be specialized clusters equipped for manufacturing and logistics. The idea is to concentrate our efforts in defined areas where we can provide essential infrastructure, warehouses, custom inspection facilities, secure perimeters, reliable utilities, and easy connectivity to our port and airport. The second portion of this is enhance qualifying certificates for manufacturing. We know from decades of experience that Guam's qualifying certificate program is a powerful incentive tool for attracting investment. Historically, QC spurred growth in industries by offering tax rebates in exchange for investment and local hiring. Bill 102-38 creates a special QC category for tariff-advantage manufacturing enterprises. Any eligible company that sets up manufacturing or assembly operations in Guam to produce goods for duty-free exports to the U.S. mainland can qualify. The incentives include up to a 75% rebate on corporate income tax for 20 years, up to a 75% rebate on dividend tax for five years, 100% abatement of real property taxes for 10 years, and expedited permitting for facilities. These generous incentives align with our existing QC benefits but are tailored to manufacturing. To ensure community benefits, companies must hire at least 60% Guam residents to receive these QC incentives. So the program directly creates local jobs and skill development. And then the third portion of this is workforce development programs. A critical, critical part of this effort is ensuring that Guam's people are ready to fill the jobs we aim to create. Bill 102-38 establishes a coordinated workforce development and training program. The bill also enlists the participating companies in this training effort. QC beneficiaries are required to contribute to workforce development, whether by hosting apprentices or co-funding training programs. We even authorize additional tax credits for companies that make significant investments in upskilling local workers. The goal is to grow a homegrown skilled workforce in parallel with the industries we are attracting. This way, the quality jobs from entry level to high-tech will go to the people of Guam. Our population will gain new expertise, and we will have new manufacturing fields to bring us into the future. In addition to these pillars, the GTADA includes provisions for transparency and accountability, annual reporting on the program's outcomes, periodic legislative review, and regular stakeholder consultations to refine the approach. We want this effort to be dynamic and responsive to real-world results, ensuring that the program delivers tangible benefits and remains transparent to our community. In summary, the GTADA is needed to kickstart a new era of economic diversification using old tools we already have in the box, tools unique to Guam. Guam can become a strategic manufacturing and distribution hub in the Pacific. I want to address an important point raised in the fiscal note and by some stakeholders, the concern that this bill could be an unfunded mandate. The bill primarily seeks to establish a tax incentive like our QC program. This, coupled with the tariff environment we now have in the world, could make this program, in essence, sell itself. We have the geographic advantage, and thanks to General Headnote 3A4, we have a built-in edge that almost no other U.S. community has. Rather than let that edge remain on paper, we intend to use it to build manufacturing, employ our people in skilled trades, and attract investment from around the world. We must try to capture this moment in history to our utmost economic advantage. So I ask my colleagues to support this legislation, and I thank the chairwoman for allowing me to hear this bill today. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And at this time, I'd like to invite those to come forward to-- for testimony, and it would be AGIDA. I don't know who-- how many wants to come up, but AGIDA, please bring up your crew, whoever you want testifying. Director Ike Paredo from Customs, as well as Chief Vincent Paris, if you can come forward while you're getting prepared. I'll go ahead and read Rev and Tax's testimony, written testimony that they provided, and it states, from Rev and Tax, "DRT's role is administrative in nature and at the back end of process," parentheses, "or after the Guam Economic Development Authority has determined or established equabilities." So, unquote, I mean, parentheses. "Should this bill pass into law, the qualifying certificates QC's will be processed in the same manner as under its current program and after relative returns have been filed. Each claim will also be subject to the same reconciliation and compliance check." And that is from Department of Revenue and Taxation. I'd like to thank Guam Economic Development, Tina, you and your crew for being on time today. Apologize for the lateness and having to put your bill last on this one, but thank you for seeking out for me. And I will recognize you first to begin your testimony. Please state your name for the record and your agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tallo and Hafaday, to you and members of the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Regulatory Affairs, Technology, Justice, Elections, and Retirement. My name is Christina Garcia, AGIDA CEO and administrator. I am joined today with my, quote, "subject matter experts" at Kamachu, our Business and Economic Development Division Manager, as well as Matt Baza, Assistant Manager. I'm here to provide this testimony in support of Bill Number 102-38, as we support the intent of the bill to increase opportunities for investment in manufacturing in Guam. The bill seeks to spur additional activities in manufacturing by leveraging Guam's status as a duty-free port outside of the U.S. Customs Territory. Products and raw materials can enter directly into Guam from any country without tariff or duty. Furthermore, products manufactured in Guam have the potential to enter into the U.S. tariff-free if the product meets federal requirements under General Headnote 3A, Section 4. AGIDA would like to reinforce to the committee to the reality that although the bill seeks to require AGIDA to issue certifications for products manufactured in Guam, in order to comply with Headnote 3A, AGIDA has no authority to issue such certifications. Any preclearance or precertification of products for export under Headnote 3A would have to be conducted with the assistance of Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. This potential has been discussed in previous meetings between AGIDA and CQA. The caveat with this, however, is that U.S. Customs and Border Patrol is the ultimate approving authority regarding Headnote 3A, and can override any actions taken by the government of Guam to certify any Guam-manufactured product entering into the U.S. In addition, the bill seeks to mandate AGIDA to establish a tariff-advantage zone-- excuse me-- with essential infrastructure, including warehousing, customs processing facilities, advanced security measure, utility support, and logistical connectivity to airports and ports. We want to let the committee know that AGIDA currently does not have a readily-available inventory or property, as both of our industrial parks are at virtually full capacity with long-existing commercial tenants. The identification of land, either public or private, will require multi-level collaboration between various government entities, realtors, and private loan owners. Bill 102 aims to establish a special qualifying certificate for manufacturing or assembly operations in Guam. Currently, manufacturing is an eligible category under the QC program. Any manufacturer that enters into Guam today and meets the requirements of QC law may obtain a QC with the tax benefits the bill proposes, subject to the recommendation of the AGIDA Board of Directors and approval by the Governor of Guam. As such, it may be more appropriate to maintain the tax benefits under the-- As such, it may be more appropriate to maintain the tax benefits under the existing QC statute. Lastly, GIDEA is not a regulatory agency. However, the bill seeks to provide expedited permitting and regulatory approvals from relevant Guam government entities to businesses that receive a special QC the bill proffers. Although GIDEA does its best to foster communication and collaboration between investors and our regulatory agencies, GIDEA itself has no regulatory authority to issue expedited permits or regulatory approvals. While we support efforts to streamline and increase efficiencies in these processes, it would be misleading to establish the expedited permits the bill is proposing, as there is no way for GIDEA to provide that to the investor. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this testimony on Bill 102. The bill's goal to incentivize and foster a stronger, more diverse economy is laudable. As always, GIDEA stands ready to work with the committee and the legislature as a whole as the bill moves through the legislative process. If you have any questions, you can reach me at the GIDEA offices. Sen. Saramenti.
Thank you, Director. And at this time, I'd like to recognize that Guam Customs and Quarantine, you are now recognized, sir.
Good morning, Senator. Senator Calvo, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Talahe, I'm sorry, Tyto. Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to appear before this committee to testify in support of this bill. I want to express my sincere gratitude, especially today, to appear to testify in support of Bill 102-38, which mirrors similar intent and opportunities found in other bills that were also mentioned last week. As stated in the bill's intent, Guam is not a part of the Customs Territory of the United States. Thus, all imported goods and merchandise directly imported from foreign countries or consumption in commerce of Guam are not subject to imported duties or tariffs under the harmonized tariff code of the United States or any local tariff statute. In fact, one of the first actions of the first Guam legislature, when the administration of customs on the island was transferred to the local control, was the passage of Public Law 1002-S, removing the assessment of tariffs on imports to the island, thus making Guam a duty-free port. With local control of customs, CQA stands as Guam's indispensable first line of defense. Our fundamental mission is to safeguard our island, its cherished people, and invaluable resources, all while actively facilitating legitimate trade, travel, commerce, perpetuating our economic stability. CQA carries out its critical responsibilities with unique broad authorities in order to enforce both local and federal laws, regulations, and policies governing the admissibility of goods and merchandise, interdicting illicit contraband, protecting our flora and fauna from the introduction of invasive plants and animal diseases, valigent frontieristic implements, activities, or threats, ensuring legitimate activities occurring within our borders, trade facilities, and protecting our ports of entry. This rigorous oversight ensures the continued physical, social, and economic security not only in Guam and at the broader Western Pacific region, but also demonstrates assurance and global interest promoting confidence with commerce and trade with current neighboring Pacific communities and the possibilities with other destinations as part of the United States. CQA supports the goal of the Guam Tariff Advantage Development Act, leveraging Guam's political relationship with the U.S., special opportunities provided to insular possessions under Headnote 3A, proximity to large global suppliers in the region, shipping and airline logistic routes, and a capable customs administration with the understanding of imported and exported requirements. Opportunities provided under Headnote 3A are not new. In the mid-'80s, Guam hosted a watchmaking industry wherein parts were imported to the island, assembled by local workforce, meeting the substantial transformation criteria, and then exported into the U.S. duty-free. Although the watch industry is no longer in operation, the opportunity to expand to other technical manufacturing and transformative assemblies industry exists, which, as the bill intends, possesses great potential to diversify our economy as well as growing our technical and professional capabilities. However, since that time, significant changes have occurred in the supply chain, global trade policies, country product compliance, and border security. Meeting these challenges and adhering to this new and sometimes evolving trade rules and requirements or requirements are responsibilities of our government must facilitate with the appropriate U.S. agencies. This engagement, as the bill intends, is necessary in order to provide updated requirements under Headnote 3A provisions, which should be handed over to the Guam Economic Authority in conjunction with CQA in order to prepare a comprehensive understanding containing investment information, requirements, procedures, and rules for potential investors. In consideration of the information, CQA provides the following recommendations to amend Section 7 of this bill, which is under the appropriate agency of jurisdiction. Section 7, Certification of Products Manufactured in Guam. Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency shall develop a certification system consistent with the General Headnote 3A of the U.S. harmonized tariff schedule to verify certified goods as substantially transformed and value-added within Guam. B, enterprise, consistent with the provisions contained on Guam Code Annotated Title V, Chapter 73, 73104, and subsequent rules and regulation must submit detailed information about imported materials, local value addition, and substantial transformation process. And C, CQA shall have certifications promptly upon verifying compliance with applicable tariffed manufacturing conditions. D, pursuant to the Administrative Judication Act, CQA is authorized to establish fees for the recovery of inspection and operations, compliance programs, record maintenance, auditing, investigating, and any other customs service associated with the certification of compliance of certificate of origin processes necessary to adhere to rules of country and exportation and purposes of the Guam Tariff Advantage Act. These recommendations and amendments are made suited for CQA as we appropriately position at the ports of entry and the process regulatory and statutory authorities and are functionally, operationally, and procedurally positioned to carry out this portion of the intent of this act. Furthermore, CQA is committed to work closely with this committee to refine the bill's language. These amendments are designed to significantly enhance our ability to effectively carry out the overreaching intent of this legislation. Again, thank you for allowing us to provide this testimony, and I will be available for any comments if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director. You know, I'm going to turn it over to the author. I had a few questions, but I'll just let you go ahead and ask some questions, because I have some concerns that I wanted to ask, but we'll have you. You want to open up?
Oh, no, I'll go ahead and close.
You want to do the closing? Okay. Senator Calvo, do you have any questions? Okay. Okay, well, my questions are, you know, now that GIDEA has come here and said that this bill, it's more, you know, catered to Guam Customs and Quarantine to implement. And according to Guam Customs and Quarantine, you have a lot of amendments that are moving forward, so would this bill have been better off just leaving GIDEA out of it, because you do have QC programs in place that you offer? So would it mean that we just switch everything to Guam Customs and Quarantine? I'm going to ask GIDEA that. Would that be best to just have to revise this bill and send it back and give it to Customs?
Well, in speaking with my colleagues, GIDEA was brought in because, again, we work with investors, we work with developers, and so offering the incentives and benefits is really our role. You do mention the qualifying certificate, and again, what you offer here, for the most part, is already included in the existing program with the exception that we asked that you remove that portion about expediting the regulatory. And then we agree with Customs and Quarantine that they would be the ones to work on the second part, which is more in the certification and regulation.
And then Customs.
One more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I would also like--
Yeah.
I would also like to add--
Recognize your name.
Sorry. My name is Ed Camacho. I'm the Business and Economic Development Manager for the Guam Economic Development Authority. I would also like to add that I think we can improve the QC in some respect to make this more doable for investors. One of the things that investors will want to bring in in order to do this is equipment. The QC does not have a use tax benefit right now. That's something we can look at, and we mentioned previously in another public hearing that that's something we're going to have to look at if this thing moves forward.
Yep.
But we would definitely like to improve what we already have.
Yeah, I think that's something that my office is also looking into with GIDEA to readjust the QC program, to add some areas that may need to be tweaked a bit, you know, especially to meet today's products that are coming in. It's quite different from what we had 20 years ago. So, okay. And then for Customs, not only do you feel that this bill should actually go into your jurisdiction here, and what kind of funding are you going to need to do this without having, and you mentioned in your testimony about having to do the AAA process to raise fees in order to accommodate this. If you were to do a startup on all this, I want to know how much it would cost. Yeah.
Well, let me first comment on the question that you asked, whether or not GIDEA should, you know, or Customs should take the lead on this. It's important for me to also mention that even back in the early '80s, late '90s, we had this particular program within Guam, and I even mentioned one company that was here. And I think it's important to understand that from the initial process, I think GIDEA plays a vital role in ensuring that permits are applied through GIDEA, and they actually provide the mechanism in moving forward with Headnote 3A. Customs comes in with the actual formulation of the implementation of Headnote 3A, because we are responsible under that particular trade incentive program to ensure that the products that are, or the raw materials that are being imported complies with what Headnote 3A is all about. So it's very important that GIDEA and Customs works together in this particular bill to ensure that we move forward with this type of incentive. And of course, I don't have the breakdown of how much it's going to cost if Customs were to take over, and probably the chief will probably elaborate on that. But I can safely tell you that I was the certifying officer when Headnote 3A was implemented back in the '80s, and the advantage of that is that Guam Customs was given the authority to issue U.S. certificate of origins on all these products going into the U.S. And that in itself is the most important documentation that's required to move goods from Guam to the U.S. under Customs Territory to certify that we have acknowledged that they have met all the transformation that's needed for that particular process.
Chief Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Vincent Asan Perez. I am the Chief of Customs, and earlier this week, we were here to provide testimony. And some of the facets of this bill are very similar in our response to the bill. We really support the intent of the bill. Now, before I give you a figure of how much it costs to start up one of these areas for Customs, I just want to paint a picture for you that Guam Customs, for the last six years, hired approximately 74 customs officers, and the reality is that we need anywhere between 250 to 300 officers. Currently, despite our recruitment and retention efforts, we're down to 125, and that we're going to be losing another officer in the coming weeks. And much of our officers are being hired by the U.S. Customs and Border Protection because of the substantial increase in their wages. So if we're going to consistently or constantly fight the battle of trying to hire people just to get our numbers up, we're currently losing that battle. But to go to the point of how much it's going to cost, it's going to cost anywhere between $1.5 to $2 million, because you're going to need to start up. You're going to need to have a group of people dedicated just for these areas. And we're looking at the number of customs officers at 124, and the reality is, we need 250 without these new requirements. And then you're going to initiate a brand-new area for economic diversity. You're going to need a startup cost to cover the training of officers, the acquisition of non-intrusive inspection equipment, x-rays, technology, tracking, and the hiring of new officers to man this area. So it is going to be kind of high in the beginning, right, to hire, but if we can also take care of the retention initiatives or the lack thereof for the customs officers, I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't have to worry about whether or not in two years we're going to be losing officers. So there are certain things that impact our capability to conduct these operations, but truly Guam Customs is the mechanism that would be in place to facilitate any type of movement within this zone, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a reality check for us all, definitely. So thank you so much. Well, I hope that, you know, with Customs and Quarantine, there are new, we talked earlier about AI, you know, technology that's moving to, you know, to assist areas where labor is short, you know, to move in these new technologies. So I hope, because, man, 250 down to 124 is very, very, I mean, you're running on fumes almost, you know? And then, of course, when things get difficult for customs agents, when they're overtime, how much overtime, actually, are you guys accumulating every quarter? Oh, turn on your mic, please.
I was saying that actually, on a fiscal year, close to $1 million.
A million?
Yes.
In overtime?
Overtime, yes.
Wow, that's quite a bit.
And the reason for that is because of what the chief has just mentioned, the shortage of manpower. We have currently, at this point in time, we have 30 officers that are undergoing training, and hopefully that we can, we're looking at graduation for them probably in December of this year. And then we're looking at additional 15 officers that are starting already and will be graduating in late July of next year. So that's an additional, maybe 40--
To the 124?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, like DOC, when they ever have recruitments and they go through the program and then they work there for like three months and then they're picked up from someone else, do you have that same, I mean, that's pretty much what's happening with you guys, because they get trained, they get everything that they need to be able to qualify for the U.S. Customs, and that's what's happening. You're losing them, and you're putting money into training them for a federal side. It's unfortunate, and I hope you guys come up with some kind of, you know, rate that keeps them, you know?
Yes, Senator, that's a very good question, and we have also brought that up with the front office, that we need some sort of a mechanism in place where we hire these individuals that we get some sort of a return in five years, you know, before they move on.
Right.
Or else payback, whatever investment--
They have to pay back what the training cost.
Say again?
Like they have to pay back what the training costs. I mean, teachers do the same thing, or nurses too, you know, if we can find something in that area. Okay, well, that's another story. You don't need to divert, but anyways, I thank you so much, and I'd like to offer the author the legislation for his remarks and also his closing remarks at the same time. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank all the people that came in today to give their feedback and commentary. It's very, very important that you came in and did that today, because I see a-- It's very, very important that you came in and did that today, because I see a real opportunity here with these tariff advantage zones, especially with the way the current administration is treating these tariffs. We have at least three more years of continuing tariff behavior. So that is an opportunity for us to take advantage of something that is unique to Guam, unique to our territorial island status. And like I was saying earlier, there are very, very few benefits to our territorial island status, so the few benefits we have, we should take advantage of. And while this is kind of a new proposal, this is not a new idea, this is not a new concept for what we've done on Guam. We have taken advantage of our tariff, unique tariff scheduling in the past. Once upon a time, we used to have a vibrant watchmaking community here on the island using these unique Guamanian advantages. And you know what happened when we created a manufacturing industry here on Guam? It was so widely successful that lobbyists from the watch industry lobbied Congress to change the laws so Guam could no longer use our tariff advantage zones on watches. They made a specific carve-out to kill the Guam watch industry, because using our tariff laws made Guam too successful, too prosperous. So this goes to show that as a mechanism, we have a proof of concept. We can show that this has worked before, and it can work again. Our fatal flaw, when we attempted this previously, was there was no coordination at the congressional level with the local level. So when we made these changes at the local level, there was no one to really defend the changes and the industry on Guam when lobbyists went to Washington to start chopping away at it. Also goes to show the importance of having congressional representation in both chambers of the House. But I digress. We know these tariff advantage programs can work, can bring prosperity to Guam, but we need to lay the tracks down properly at the local level and at the congressional level, not if, but when we are successful in achieving a manufacturing based on Guam, we need to do what we can to protect it from the sharks and vultures from Washington, D.C., who would cut down our prosperity once we actually start taking advantage of the tools at our disposal. So thank you again for all your testimony. I asked my colleagues to please support this bill, and, you know, it's clear from the testimony that there needs to be amendments and changes to the bill, and that's the importance of the markup session. But don't let the fact that this bill is not coming out the gates perfect as a reason to dismiss this idea completely. There is some real merit, there is some real proof of concept, and there is real opportunity if we take advantage of the laws already on the books. What my legislation is doing is not creating anything new, it is expanding upon what is already there. So whatever fixes we need to make, whatever adjustments we need to do so that this policy goes through, I am open to any and all changes. There are no sacred cows in this bill. We can change anything we need to make this program work. So, you know, this is a technical problem that we need to solve more than a political problem, because I think everybody is on board with bringing manufacturing, American manufacturing here to Guam. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you so much for this time, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Parkinson, and I can guarantee you that in my office, and when I do markup meetings, it's not political at all. It's what's in the best interest of the people of Guam and to follow protocol on where bills should lie, and we thought this was a GIDEA thing, which I oversee economic development. However, I'm very inclined to ask that you do remove this bill, rewrite the bill to focus on Customs and Quarantine, because I think they would be the correct agency in order to oversee something like this and also provide them with the funding that's needed, because I'm not one to issue out any bill that doesn't have a funding source if it needs funding. You know me for that. I've been very consistent, and, but I am inclined to encourage you to look at pulling this bill back, working with Customs, and then that means it would go under another committee. I believe Senator Gumitato is the Oversight Chair of Customs and Quarantine. That would be the best, but I don't want you to take away anything from what you're trying to do, because we're trying to find every means to help our economy right now, and this is one way to do it, to provide the ability, being a U.S. territory versus a U.S. state. We have, you know, rules that are not as strict as in the U.S. when it comes to tariffs, so that's a good thing. We can take advantage of that. And of course, the bill that was heard, Bill 174, I believe it is, introduced by Vice Speaker Tony Ada on zones, I believe it was the, Vince, help me, what kind of trade zones?
Free trade logistics zone.
Yeah, and maybe working with Senator Parkinson, you might be able to work with him on this legislation to kind of, like I said, mold it into something that whatever the free trade zone is not implementing, that's not in that bill, that can be incorporated into the tariff bill that we're looking at. So there's always a win-win for the people somehow if we work together and collaborate and not make it political. Transparency, accountability, so let's move forward to that. So that being said, again, I thank you so much, Director from GIDEA, and wishing your agency a happy 50th, I believe, 60th, okay, 60th, even better, anniversary for GIDEA, 60 years, and great accomplishment and great things that have happened there. So wish the office, please extend my congratulations to the staff at GIDEA and all the hard work that they do there. And of course, Customs and Quarantine, I greatly appreciate you being here and providing your testimony, and I hope you work with the author of this legislation moving forward. That being said, if there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our hearing on Bill 102-38, as well as 165-38 and 178-38. My office will continue to accept written testimonies on today's hearing for five business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 28238 Arch Bishop Flore Street, Suite 407, the DNA Building, Hagatna, and you also send written testimony to my office at senator taloty@gmail.com. Thank you for participation. Create a great day and create a great weekend. The time now is 9:50 a.m. in the morning. This hearing now is adjourned.